Let's call to order the December 10th, 2020 meeting of the Nelson County School Board. We'll begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the God with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is the approval of the agenda, and I will need a motion from a member to approve the agenda if there are no changes requested.
I will move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's have it. Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of electronic participation by a member. We have two members this evening, Mr. Perkins and Ms. Turner Giles, who are requesting to join the meeting electronically this evening for personal reasons, and I will need a motion from a member to approve that action.
I move that we approve electronic participation for Mrs. Turner Giles and Mr. Caesar Perkins for the meeting.
A second, then.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments from board members. So, Ms. Turner Giles, would you like to start?
Sure, certainly. So, I guess I attended the Virginia School Board Association Annual Conference. That was during the week of November 16th. It was virtually, and it kicked off with the delegate assembly on Monday. I was involved with moderating several of those sessions and providing over the closing session. And I just want to personally thank Margaret Claire, as well as Dr. Eagle, for their attendance at that particular conference. Certainly want to continue to thank our teachers, administrators, and everyone for everything that they're doing in our current 100% virtual environment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
I have no comment.
Nope.
Okay, Ms. Powell?
I just wanted to highlight, I had a BRVGS meeting this past week. One of the things within the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School that we've talked about is, in the virtual environment, how do we not only retain the students that we have, but also recruit? And fortunately, Dr. Eagle just told me that recruitment for Nelson County currently looks much better than it initially did. But as a group, the Governor's School is acknowledging that they're going to have to do some things quite differently to maintain the students that they have, as well as grow the program from within. So, that's a little bit of a report from that group. The other thing I just want to say is, thank you to the teachers, the students, the parents, especially the students, for reaching out and sharing their thoughts, their opinions, concerns, and insights on a return to school that hopefully will happen at some point in the future. But I want to highlight the eighth grade classes that did some persuasive writing with their students on whether we should be in virtual school or not. And I will tell you, the kids did a phenomenal job. So, if you have a student in that class that we had a letter shared, pat your kid on the back because they were phenomenal letters, and it's everything right about what we're doing in our schools. So, I think that's my report. But thank you to everybody, and we appreciate your patience. And, you know, our goal is to do the right thing for the students, for the staff, and for the families.
Thank you. Ms. Claire?
I actually really hate following you. And I'm glad that Ms. Turner Giles reminded me about the delegate meeting, because I did represent us at that delegate meeting, and I was able to vote on a number of different issues. And it would take a really long time for me to explain all of those things here, so I'll write it up for us for next time. And I apologize for not having that ready for today. I also wanted to thank the eighth grade students, because they just really, I think, said everything that everybody else is saying, too, in such a very, I don't know, I just loved them. So, thank you very much for doing that. Ms. Broman and Ms. Berry, they're the eighth grade teachers who participated in that or sent us the letters. I also want to thank the people who have voiced their opinions via email or in whatever way, because it's really important that we get your feedback, you know? If we agree 100% or we don't agree, or whatever, I just, I think it's really important that you do express yourselves. It's part of our process, and I love to hear it, all right? And I'm always trying to listen to everybody. And I also want to thank the school board, because in the last, you know, we have really, really, really worked hard to make sure that, you know, everybody is, feels supported and has a voice and is listened to and is heard, and that is very valuable, especially in this scenario that we're in. So, that's all.
Thank you. So, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Again, I can't express enough the thanks to our teachers and staff and to the parents for really persevering during this situation that we are in with the pandemic and the virtual learning. I know it's tough, but please believe me when I tell you that every board member and every staff member is working very hard to do what we feel is best for the students in this county and keeping them safe, and the best for their education and keeping them safe. Also, the letters from the eighth grade students, from Ms. Broman and Ms. Berry's class, were really, really enjoyable to read. It's interesting to hear them with their thoughts about what they feel, their experiences, and what they're going through right now. A lot of times, when you ask students in school what they think of something, especially if they're a little bit younger, they'll echo the sentiments, maybe with what they're hearing in their home. But these students really put in a lot of effort to talk about what, how they felt and how it was working for them, and were, really did a good job with persuasive words and phrases to try to explain how they felt and why they felt the way they did. So, I think they did an amazing job on that, and I really enjoyed reading this. Okay, so next we are at, let's see, we need to do important dates. Okay.
Just note them, yeah. So, we have the CTE Advisory Council this Friday, and December 18th, end of the course. SOL testing ends, and it's also the last day of first semester in quarter two. Of course, going into winter break, student learning, well, staff returns, excuse me, January 4th, and student learning resumes on January 6th. And then January 14th, we're right back here for a school board meeting, and we begin budget.
Everyone's favorite. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is comments from our student representative.
Hold for a second.
There we go.
Okay, thank you, Lauren.
Virtual learning is going pretty well right now. Like I said last time, the teachers are really flexible when it comes to internet issues and problems like that that we might face. But I will have to say that I am ready to go back and kind of get back into a routine and just see my classmates and stuff. But I understand that the decision y'all make will be to the best of our benefit, so I understand and respect that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have comments from our superintendent.
Okay, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chief, board members, and all that have joined us this evening. I thank you. The first to start off with is, two months ago, I shared with you some goals. They were both the, or three. They were the reminder of the board goals that were developed several years ago, a couple of years ago. My goals as a superintendent, and then just the division goals. Based on just the board meetings and things that we've been discussing, we have not had a time to really look at those fully. So, what I'm asking is if you will, the board will allow me to meet with Mr. Chief and Ms. Claire as the chair and the vice chair, maybe in January, prior to our January meeting, and to discuss those a little bit more in depth. The other side of that may be to discuss further the will of the board, if you will, for streaming and what we want to do as we go into 2021. And so, that's what I would like to do. We have a couple of action items that, so that you can roll through those action items, I want to give you a time now to ask questions if you have any. We do have the bonus action item there, and I have presented information for that action. The instructional calendar, just to note, we made a change since the last time you looked at it, and that change was the report card distribution. It was on the 8th, and we moved it to January 11th. We added just a info piece on just noting that semester days, based on so many unknown factors, may be altered, but this is what we are presenting at this time. And then the end of the quarter three, or third quarter grading period we have is March 12th. So, those were just some very minor changes that we made since the last time that I had you review it, and that is up for action. And then the final, probably close second to our favorite to budget, would be the policy. And we have provided with you four-year review all the policies for a second reading. And so, with those three items, welcome questions later, too, but if anybody had any questions that I could answer.
None for me.
None, okay, very good. So, the next area is the equity survey. And so, as I shared with the staff and the board, a couple of weeks ago, November 30th through the 4th, was deemed as Ed Equity Week in Virginia. And based on the Governor's proclamation and Dr. Lane, Superintendent of Public Education's encouragement, they asked all school divisions to kind of highlight that week. And so, what I did was I sent out a survey. And the survey, I had 32 overall responses from our staff. And I was looking for two things. One, what did they feel were the barriers to students' learning and successful outcomes? And not just now, this fall semester, as much as just overall. And then to name and give a reason for naming an equity champion. And so, I was excited that I got 32 responses. I am going to post all of the staff members and/or organizations. We had a couple of organizations that were named as equity champions for Nelson County Public Schools. Just to give you an example, I'm, give an example of just a few with no names, but there was a teacher noted for her compassion for all students, a counselor as an advocate for student support and supplies that have been needed, another teacher for going the extra mile to include and help all students, and then a community organization was slated for support. Specifically, this one was slated for support during the pandemic. So, I will list out those equity champions for you in my monthly newsletter and provide the name as we are still going through the survey and confirming all the information. Some of the top barriers, as you can imagine, through the pandemic, some of them were the internet access, social community activities, transportation, access to extracurricular, and income barriers. So, those were just a few that were listed. So, I will share some more information, but I was appreciative of the input that I did receive. On the next item, Board of Supervisors and County Administrators Communication. So, I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, and they had a big announcement. As a matter of fact, Delegate Avoli was in attendance, and I had a chance to say hello to him. I met him at the Capitol Conference last year in Richmond. He represents our north, northwest side of, or corner of Nelson, up towards Augusta area. And so, they had a broadband initiative approval and funding, big announcement. And I know some of you have heard from the Board of Supervisors and have seen it on the news. So, that was exciting, because what that means is internet access throughout the whole county. And so, that was really exciting. They also discussed a county staff bonus for consideration, and so they are looking to do that for their county staff. And I was disappointed, as you all know, that we were not able to have a joint board meeting for December. However, I'm very hopeful, because I did have a couple of Board of Supervisors talk with me about possibly getting one together in January. And I got another note after the meeting stating that another board member was hopeful that we could meet in January. So, I'm still working on that joint board meeting with the Board of Supervisors. Really quick, we want to say, give a big shout out and a thank you to Mr. Whitehead from Tiger Fuels and also the Exxon Corporation for their support of our schools. They, once again this year, have donated $500 to the, a $500 amount, let me see, sorry. Now, $1,000, excuse me, $1,000 to Ty River Elementary School, $1,000 to Rockfish River Elementary, $500 to the middle school, and $500 to the high school. And we are appreciative of any amount, and this is specific to the math and science program and initiative that they have been supporting for the last several years. So, Mr. Whitehead stopped by. Normally, we have had him come in and present these, and he said that he would just drop them by, and we will share our word of thanks with him and get these checks out to the schools, again, for the purpose of that math and science STEM initiative. Adding a thank you, we received, here at the high school, for the NCHS clothing closet, we received from the Ponton family, and that would be Sharon and Johnny Ponton. They donated, it is estimated, from what the staff can see, thousands of dollars of new and many name brand clothing to that clothing closet. And I've got a couple of pictures here, I can show the board later, of the piles of clothing that they have donated. And so, that is really exciting. The school nurse and many staff members work to make sure that people within our county have access to that. So, we are very appreciative for them and for that donation. Want to share real quick some preliminary SOL data. The one score that I can give you that is final is from writing this fall. And this is super exciting, because right now, as we all know, we're not in the most ideal situation for learning. And so, for English 11 writing, we had these students come in in October and take their tests. And there were 41 test takers. Out of the 41 test takers, we had 38 passes. And out of those 38 passes, we had 13 pass advanced. And that is incredible. It was a 92.68% pass rate. So, we congratulate the high school and the English teachers for English 11, and those students, of course, who did really well on the writing test. Now, that's an early test. We are in the midst, as many know, of the, and of course, SOL testing that started this past Monday on December 7th, and will run through next week. So, we've had several tests. I can't give final scores, because we have a lot of makeup, so we have different things going on, but I can give you some totals. We had 43 biology test takers, and so far, we've had 24 pass. We've had 47 World History I test takers, and so far, we've had 21 pass. We've had 15 Algebra II, and we've had 11 pass. And we've only had eight geometry so far, and we've had five pass. So, again, we have a lot of different makeups that we have to do. We have final scores to get together and everything. So, well, hopefully by January, I'll be able to share with you some of those SOL scores. Okay, and finally, just shared with you this past week in an email, but we are now a member of the Coalition of Small and Rural Schools of Virginia, COSAR, and there are 75 members. And it is a coalition formed to be one voice for public education in rural Virginia. And so, these schools, as I shared with you all, they advocate for funding, for legislation, for policy that is geared towards taking care of small rural schools. So, I'm excited about that, and I feel this will be very beneficial for Nelson County moving forward. And unless there are any questions, I believe that's all for my report.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Eagle? Okay, next item on the agenda is comments from the public. And again, you need to sign up ahead of time. I would remind everyone that you're going to be held to three minutes per speaker. And it usually goes better if you have prepared your remarks and you stick to a specific topic. I know that from experience. From my speaking. Very good. Okay, the first speaker is Mary Catherine Allen.
Good evening. Am I here? Okay. I'm a little more prepared than I was last month to speak to you. We are advocating for our children to be in school. We are not demanding that you make all children return to school. As parents, we are asking for choice. Some parents may not feel comfortable sending their children to school, and that's great. They can continue to virtually learn. I'm very happy the Board of Supervisors are getting more internet in the county. I think that's a great thing. Unfortunately, I feel like that's two semesters too late for most of the residents that live here in Nelson County. I'm going to discuss my freshman, who's 15, first. He's part of the Algebra II honors class that was moved to Apex after Labor Day weekend when his teacher went out on maternity leave, which means the school had ample time to prepare for a long-term substitute for her class. Takes nine months to grow a baby. I know I had three of them. That means that y'all were well aware before March that she needed, and you couldn't by summer find a substitute. That class should have been put off until next semester coming up, when those students could have had a teacher teaching them, even if it was virtually. Because of that, my son, on the way home from his SOL testing today, was extremely distraught. I doubt he got any other classwork done when he got home, but his response to me was, "I feel like I was put in a 20-foot hole with concrete walls and given a twig to dig out of it." And how deflating that must feel to feel that way when you're coming home from testing. He took his World History on Monday, or Tuesday, and passed, barely. I guess they had 28 or 29 classes, which is only a third of the time that they normally would have had to cover the content, and we're testing these kids. I know that y'all don't control the SOL testing, but you certainly do control how they're educated. Today was a hard day, ending with his week of SOL testing. My middle schooler's in seventh grade. She's a wonderful artist for her age and has been failing art for most of the semester. She's an introvert, but has mostly completely shut down trying to keep up with her grades and the schoolwork. My third grader tries really hard, but does not have the attention span to sit in his room properly and learn all day. Mr. Stinson is doing an amazing job, and Stephen is learning, but it's still not the same, and it's difficult for him. The drive that our children used to have for school is completely gone. As parents, we teach our three children. They cannot allow choices to define how they move forward with their actions. We stay on top of them, and I guess they call it nagging. That's what I'm called, is nagging mom. But we are advocates for our children nonetheless, and we feel like James said it best today. This is the way he described his experience, and I feel unfortunate that he feels that way. How sad to feel completely deflated. I'm not here to debate, and I'm not here to talk anymore to other parents' choices of their children virtually learning. I'm here to advocate for my children to be in class. That's what they need, and that's how they're going to move forward. The poor planning of the Apex program for Algebra II. It's said on the bottom of the program before he's...
I'm sorry, where I have to come?
All right. So, since I've finished my time with that, the next thing that I do need to bring to your attention is something, the teachers that are texting my...
Wait a minute.
The teachers that are texting my teenager in high school has asked for my permission. Therefore, I monitor his phone between the teachers and him.
Okay, I understand, but everyone has three minutes to speak, and you've used your three minutes.
Okay. But I'm telling you, y'all need to do something about the middle school texting students without permission from their parents.
Thank you. Next up is Brenda Ponton.
Hi, my name is Brenda Ponton. I live at 330 Eats Lane here in Livingston. And I have an eighth grade student who, like the rest of the children, I think they desperately need to be back in school. It's not just kindergarten through first or second grade. It's all grades need to be back in school. My granddaughter has Fs on her last interim report. She had Fs on her first semester report, and she has always been an AB student. She does not learn remotely, and sometimes it just seems like she's out there in left field. When the teachers put things out there on the Chromebook, they put something and tell you, "Go read it, and then answer questions." Well, she hasn't learned anything, because she doesn't really comprehend as well in just reading. I'm having, I had to hire a tutor to teach her. And that, I'm paying $45 an hour to do the work that the teachers should be doing. And that's just not right. And I have reached out to everybody, asking anybody if they knew of any student or somebody that I could hire to help tutor my granddaughter. That's only in one class. She needs it in another class, but I can't afford to pay that price for two classes. And there are many other counties that are back in school, but just not Nelson County. It's not the students, I don't think, bringing the virus to all the teachers or whoever is getting the virus. It could be that the teachers are hanging out in places that they shouldn't be. Maybe they should be home, too. But it's a proven fact that the kids are not susceptible to the virus as older people. The rise in the number of cases are in the bigger cities, and our county has had the least amount, but yet the students are not allowed back in school. And I, hey, I think if the parents want to teach the kids at home, then that should be their decision. But for the students who cannot learn remotely and want to be back in school, I think they ought to have the opportunity to do so. They are falling far behind, and also socially. I understand losing one child to the virus is one too many. But how about losing a child to suicide due to depression caused by this virus? Just last night on the news, there was a child aged 16 who took his own life because he could no longer deal with being isolated from his friends, and depression was so real for him. I really don't want to see anything like this in Nelson County, and I don't think any of you guys would either. This is totally your responsibility to allow these students back in school, and it's really a deep injustice not putting the kids back in school right now. It is way past time, and I'd like to see the kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Bryant.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Thanks to the board members who are serving the county in this capacity, and to the administration for your efforts in navigating learning in this difficult time. I extend a special thank you to all the teachers and the staff members for their often heroic efforts to provide something to our students. As I've done in previous emails and/or personal conversations with each of the board members, I would like to encourage and implore you to find a way to get our students back into the classroom. I will not go into all... I will not go into all the data, the reasons, the emotions, or the concerns from my position, since I have already shared these and have heard many others share them as well. Past decisions indicate that these points do not carry much weight with some members of the board, anyway. What I would like to convey is that any attempt to bring the students back is better than no attempt at all. The argument that students who remain in a virtual environment cannot give a little so that those who have had no synchronous instruction thus far can get a little is not a valid argument. Today's heightened restrictions announced by the governor may raise more concern for some. None of us know what will happen between now and January. However, we need to put all the plans in place so that they are prepared to return to school if they are able. If it is necessary to bring them in cohorts, then do so, but do so quickly so that the secondary school students are back as soon as possible. Students have been practicing virtual learning for four months now. If our students return to school and the environment changes, we should be able to revert back to virtual learning relatively easily and quickly. Once that environment stabilizes, students should return to school. I am a healthcare worker. I understand the concern for staff. Take care of the teachers and the staff members. If they need to be out, provide for that. Be creative. Most surrounding counties have students in school. Find out what works for them and adapt. Ask them all if that's what it takes. Most of us realize that there is no perfect solution to this problem, but most of us are also willing to go an extra mile to make this work. Our students need the option to return to school. Please consider providing that for them. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jackie Mays, and most of these ladies have been giving you statements. I have questions. Who makes the decision on to close or open the schools? Do you all? Does the superintendent? Do you all give answers to any of these things?
We typically do not answer questions during public comment. It's just for comment.
I see, so you just listen and then kind of do what you're going to do, is that right? You don't give answers, okay. So we don't know how many of our seniors will be accepted into college this year due to the way school is going, is that right? Can you nod your head? I guess there's no point in talking to you. You're not really listening.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Al Potten.
Good evening. Hey, you know, I basically want to reiterate what the others have already said tonight, and our kids need to go back to school. The only good thing that I can see that's happening here with the close down of school the way they are, the kids aren't getting drugs from each other because they're not here to get that done. They're finding it on the street, riding up and down the roads, and that's where they're getting their drugs from. I have a son that has a drug issue, and a lot of this came, you know, from this high school, and he's in recovery now. It's something that we deal with. Sheriff's Department, they can't catch these kids. They can't catch them. They're very smart. And because they're very smart, you know, they also can learn if they're in school. Well, they're not in school, and they're not getting it virtually either. We need to have our kids in school so that they can learn. This is such a disservice that our school board has voted in October to shut our schools down again. Hopefully, that will change this evening. Of course, with our governor and what he had to say today, it's highly unlikely that it's going to happen, which is very sad. You have an obligation. A school system has an obligation to these kids to give them a decent education. That's what the taxes are there for. You need to do something about this. You need to step up to the plate and make it happen. Now, the three board members aren't here who voted against it last time, so I'll guess they'll vote later this evening if you get to that, again, to shut it down again. Folks, this is all political. This is not for the kids. It's not for the teachers, because you're doing a disservice to the kids. A lot of you teachers are having a hard time dealing with this because they dearly love our kids. They love to see them here in school, the interaction. Our kids need the support of our school board to put our kids back into school. Last October, voted against it. A lot of parents are not hearing and not seeing what's going on because they won't show up to these meetings. Admiral County, that same week, they went back to school. They voted to go back to school. What's the difference? How can they do that and we can't do that? You guys need to step up to the plate and do your job. It's what you were voted in for, and this is mostly directed to the three that are not here. I certainly hope that all three are replaced as soon as possible, and we can only reach out to the county to make that happen. We've got to get that information out to the people and the public to get those kind of people out of here. You've got to look out for the kids. That's what this is all about.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda... Next, there we go. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, we have meeting minutes, second reading from October 8th, 2020, the monthly financial report from November 2020, and registers from November 2020. I hope all the members have reviewed all of those. If there are no questions about items on the consent agenda, I need a motion to pass the consent agenda as a whole.
I move that we pass the consent agenda as a whole.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have items for information. Meeting minutes, first reading, November 12th, 2020. And we have the 2021-2022 Program of Studies. Ms. Janelle Stenit.
And just for the sake of time, I'm just going to run over a few facts, and then Ms. Stenit, if you need her to, to answer any questions, she will come up. We are sharing with you this evening several documents. First of all, we have the Program of Studies for the high school, the schedule for registration and orientation, so that you can see when the schools are holding their programs or doing the different steps that they do to work with the students for registering for then the classes the next year. We also have two new high school courses being proposed and supported by administration, and we have a modified middle school schedule review. So the two new courses that are both supported, one will replace a current science class and science program, and will be offered... And the other one will be offered as an elective. So the packets and the student surveys and everything have been provided there for you. The middle school schedule consideration is based on a few factors. One is for better schedule time alignment with the high school as we share current staff and also foresee more staff being shared in the future. Another consideration is in the need for blocked time for English and math, and many middle schools are doing this. So this will not only allow for more time for direct instruction, but also for the creative application projects and more authentic projects for the students to be a part of. So again, Ms. Stenit and I are here to answer any questions that the board may have as you've reviewed the documents.
I actually have a couple of questions. For the science course that you're replacing, you're switching out to a new science course, what was the thought process behind doing that?
So the thought process for science, we have realigned the science courses, and so in the eighth grade, students have the opportunity to take Earth Science, and then for federal accountability, they have to take Biology at the high school. So we have realigned so that students take, if they do not take Earth Science in the eighth grade, when they come to the ninth grade, they take Environmental Science, and then that helps prepare them for Biology, a lot of the terminology. And so they can then take Earth Science later after Biology if they should choose to, which allows us to not teach the ecology, because Environmental Science and Ecology was covering some of the same concepts, which allowed us to open up an additional elective for Oceanography.
Okay, stay there. Because the other course that you wanted to add, I just wanted to know who you were going to have teach that. Do you have a teacher yet?
For Oceanography?
No, for the other course you are going to add as an elective.
Yes.
You do already have a teacher?
Well, yeah, I was going to say the African-American Studies one?
Yeah.
For the following year, they are looking at putting it in the English elective, and so they have a teacher that they're considering. I don't think any final decisions have been made.
A lot of that will be based on the number of students, the number of sections that we need for different English courses, and how many students enroll in that course.
Okay.
Okay. On the Oceanography class, will there be a lab component to that class for eighth graders?
A lab component?
Yeah, are they doing any lab work with that?
If you'll give me just one quick second to double check. So I've given you... I provided for you a pacing guide.
Man, I don't have that on my... I don't have that in my expanded...
So, yeah, they will be creating models of oceans.
Okay.
So, yes, there will be lab components.
And I apologize, that's not on my screen to be able to see.
Yeah, that's okay, yes, but they would be creating models of oceans and currents and the ocean floor, so, yes, there would be a lab component to that.
Okay. Were there any other questions?
You talked about...
I do have one question, and perhaps this was reviewed and I just couldn't hear it. We do have a teacher proposed for the Oceanography class, is that correct? And if so, is that a teacher that's already existing, or would that be a new teacher?
That's a great question, Ms. Turner Giles, and so there, for both of these proposed courses, they would come... The teachers would come from existing staff, so we would not need new staff. And the one, Oceanography, is in Science, and there's a consideration for a teacher who would like to teach it. And then the other one, they are looking at the English department, and they are considering a teacher there also.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that, and I really appreciate the new offering for our students. So thank you to everyone that worked on that.
We're excited about these proposals.
Ms. Powell?
The block scheduling you discussed, when you changed the middle school schedule, you talked about adding time to English and to math, so then it almost looks like a block schedule, but those classes in the middle school are year-round. So how will you accommodate the curriculum? Does the curriculum expand, or do you add more remediation time within it?
Okay, so what happens when we move to the block schedule? It'll be actually almost like an eight-period day. So your English and your math are double-blocked. So they would basically, if you consider the eight periods, there would be like four periods taken up for that. And then your Science and your History can work on AB days, so they could spend almost two blocks of time in Science, and then the next day, they could spend two blocks of time in History, and it can still be taught all year.
So are you talking about time or are you talking about content?
Yeah, so if you're doubling up your time on English, and we do that at the high school, but they do semester-long courses at the high school, does that then make that English course a semester-long course, or do we double the amount of time of English year-round?
All the way through the year.
We're doubling the amount of time all the way through.
Okay. So to answer your question, maybe. For the content part, it will be expanded. That's where those projects, those authentic projects can come in, and remediation time, all kind of building.
What's the expectation of remediation out of that additional 47, 48 minutes? Are you expecting?
Well, that would be blocked 47 times two.
Right. So you add... The class was already, what, 50 minutes? So you're adding almost another 40-some minutes to the class. How much of that time do you expect to be in remediation versus instruction, actual new instruction?
Well, to begin with, it would be probably full instruction, and then looking at what happens as they go through the year and what, you know, what needs there are, then they would divide that up.
So right now, there's a block of time scheduled for reading plus, which is reading remediation, so that will be woven into the English classes already. And then, of course, based on assessments and the data from those assessments would drive each individual's classroom instructional time and remediation time.
So it's not specific right now. That's the free-flowing of that.
But it'll essentially double their time in English for their middle school schedule.
Yeah, so it gives the teachers the autonomy to schedule their classroom instructional time based on the needs of the students.
We've been requesting the teacher to request additional time now for a couple of years in the middle school audit.
Do you want to step up?
Eight years ago, we had an English audit across the county for K through A instruction, and during that audit, the results came back that they wanted extended time for English. And the teachers and their breakout groups, when they requested additional help in English for the program development, they requested extended time for English. And the counties around us usually have additional time for some form of either remediation or for English instruction, for whole group and small group instruction.
It'll be good to see, you know, what the baseline will be when, if you make that schedule change, and then what kind of lift you get from that added time and scoring and all of that. Thank you.
It was a thorough literacy audit, and so that's why I wanted to mention that.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have one other question. What impact, if any, do we feel this will have? And this is eighth grade, correct? No, this is high school.
Which one?
It's the middle school schedule.
Oh, middle school schedule, I'm sorry. So what impact, if any, do we feel like this will have on music, art, ag class? And I'm asking this question because the complaint I hear when I talk to eighth-grade students is that they don't have time by eighth grade. The college bound eighth-grade students are trying to fit things in, and they start running out of room in their schedule. So will there be an impact to that, and what would that be?
So what we'll do is we'll look at math and the students in the advanced math classes or the students who are taking Spanish, looking at if they can complete content in just one period of time. And those math classes, which would open up a period for them to have an additional exploratory.
Okay.
Because I believe those are the students that that affects the most. And usually, they can get through all of the math content with no problem in a normal period that we have now, so we're hoping that we'd be able to do that.
Right.
That would open that opportunity for them.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next, we have Item C, pupil teacher ratios with Dr. Eagle.
Okay, and so annually, we share the enrollment numbers with the board and to the public and give the ratios for our class sizes. So the document that I have shared with you shows the ratios for the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, based on the number of teachers or sections that we have. And so you will see on your chart there... I tried to color-code it, but the blue line coming down would have been totals from 2018. The green line coming down would be totals from 2019, and then the total you will see from the current year is there. For instance, for our kindergarten class, classes, excuse me, we have six of them. For instance, for our kindergarten class, classes, excuse me, we have six of them, three at Rockfish and three at Thai River. And we have a total of 90 students between those six. And so that's a ratio of 15 students. It's an average. And so that's 90 students this year, and last year for 2019, we had 99. So that just kind of gives you an example of what the chart shows. This also, data is provided for our early childhood class, and you can see the resource sizes, average about 17 to 18 students. And those are rotated, as most of you know, from elementary school through music, art, library, and PE. And the counselor at each of the elementary school also does some lessons with the students or classes. And then the final chart there gives just the homeschool enrollment numbers. We give you totals for that each year, and you can see the trend from the last five years. And so these are reported out again. And just for your information, it was interesting that when I was doing this, if you recall, our funded enrollment last year was 1589. That was the number that Ms. Irvin and I used to base our budget on. And we'll talk about that in a moment, to what it looks like for January, or what we're predicting. And if you look at the projection here and the numbers that came through with all the totals, it was 1589. So I just thought that was interesting. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Eagle? Okay. Item D is a budget update with Ms. Shannon Irvin.
Really sad that you weren't excited to talk about budget tonight, but we're going to make you suffer through here. So I have good news to share, and I think I shared it in an email earlier, and our paper shared an article on it, that we were the recipient of a $250,000 school security grant that we were just so excited to receive. With that security grant, we'll be able to do upgrades at all four of our schools, so it isn't necessarily picking elementary or secondary like it's done in the past. So we were able to share those good news with our principals today and have a plan of action of getting some of these projects done. So included in your board packet is the actual announcement of the grant award. And our subjects are kind of intertwined in terms of our capital improvement plan, because we did include the projects that we had in the grant in our proposed CIP. So the coincidence of timing is that we received recently the draft audit report of the county. And based on a previous understanding with the county board of supervisors, that if we returned funds at the end of a budget year, that they would appropriate those funds to the school board. Our audit report showed that we returned $441,548 that was not spent in previous year, that we would like to ask the board of supervisors to add to our CIP fund. Because we received the school security grant, there is a 25% local match at a minimum of what we would have to do for those safety items. So in your board packet is a, under the tab that says CIP appropriation discussion point, I listed all of the things that we had included in our CIP under security. We had listed $414,059. And we had listed that the funding source would be $250,000 out of the security grant if we were so lucky to be awarded that, and the balance would be local funds. So out of that 400-and-some thousand dollars that we could ask the board to approve, we would need to come up with the difference from the 250,000 that we're getting from the state. In addition, there is a listing of all the other items that we have identified for capital improvement plan inclusion. One of those was one of the items that the architect talked about at the last meeting with the budget, to include contingencies and any unforeseen items of about $255,000 to accomplish the replacement of the greenhouse. But that is probably as far up the line that we could consider in terms of expenses. But that project could theoretically be done if that was the priority of the board. So we would like to go and submit a request to the board of supervisors, asking for the return of the unexpended funds from last year to our CIP to accomplish some of these projects of which the board, you know, can prioritize.
Do we have to make up our minds on, on the, what we want to spend that money on? Or did you already say that? Because you said we want to ask for the money back. But you didn't say that we would need to decide what we want to spend it on, right?
Right.
In addition to that match.
Right, we would be submitting a request to the board of supervisors for a return of funds. They probably will want to know what you intend to spend the money on. So we can submit the request right away, or if you would like to delay it until you decided as a board a priority of this thing, we can certainly do that too. We just wanted you to get the information as soon as we knew the available funds.
And so with that suggestion, again, we don't have to tell them, but they, again, when we go before the board, a lot of times they ask. Two things that she, did you mention the greenhouse?
Yes.
Yes, so two things that we suggested was not only the safety grant match, but also the greenhouse, which would take up a bulk of that. So if you all had something different than those suggestions, yeah, sure, we would love to hear what your thoughts are.
I didn't really hear that she said that we wanted to do the greenhouse, so.
Yes.
That's cool.
Mainly because of the safety issues we talked about.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's a great idea.
If I think if we, any of us thought of something others to do, you know, would let me know.
Okay. And those are just, I mean, they will just ask ideas. They don't need to know specifically, they'll just want to know some ideas. So we can talk further in January of specifics. Once they appropriate it, we'll have to.
Okay.
Have you finalize on that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about those topics from Ms. Irvin?
We wanted to give you an update on the CARES grants that we received, just to let you know that we did meet our timeline, so we'll meet them as of the 17th. We have completed the purchasing of the items for the county's CARES Act funds. They had given us $500,000. Out of their allocation, we bought Chromebooks, we bought MiFi's, we are paying the monthly service for the MiFi's, and we purchased document cameras to aid in instruction. We also spent our coronavirus relief funds in the amount of $264,215. We bought food delivery equipment so that we can deliver food that is warm or cold as required to the classrooms and be in compliance with health code regulations. We also purchased two buses to help us with social distancing, as we're going to be using so many more for our fleet. And we purchased PPE protective equipment for our employees, especially our custodians and teachers, and handheld thermometers and things to help with their daily screening. So as of the 17th, we will have spent that $264,215, $15 that we were allotted. We are holding off on the largest pot of money, the CARES Act coronavirus aid relief and economic stimulus funds of $409,817.76. Still waiting to see what the economy is going to do. The sales tax is holding good for us so far. We know that the big items are going to be around the Christmas holidays, so we'll see probably in February and March how those sales are running, to see how we'll compare at the end of the year. We have until September of 2022 to spend those. It's not, you know, a big need to rush out and utilize those funds. And then the ESR gear money, we're in the process of spending. We did a number of things with that. We've bought cleaning supplies, we've hired a behavior specialist, and we've done some other things for emotional support for our teachers. And so that's in process. So we're well on our way. All right, so we're going to be talking about enrollment projections. We're going to be working on next year's budget, and we wanted you to be aware of where we thought we were. We know that it's a crystal ball of knowing who's going to show up and darken our doorsteps when school opens, and especially the kindergarten numbers are just so hard to predict. So we've put together an estimate, and it looks like our enrollment, our funded enrollment would drop from 1564 currently to 1507 next year, using the cohort survivor method, where you take your number of kindergartners and you advance them to first grade, and then you predict what your kindergarten is. The kindergarten class of 2022 consists of 115 kids born six years ago, assuming that 76% of those kids will actually enroll in public school to be a kindergartner. Our percentage has been anywhere from around 85% down to a low of 70%. So we used 76% and basically kept the kindergarten enrollment the same next year as it was this year. So that will require, you know, significant budget adjustments to be able to account for that large a decrease of students. We just wanted you to be aware of that as we enter the budget session, because that's what we will probably start our budget with, just because we are going to be very conservative, given the fact that we are still emerging from the pandemic. So I just wanted to put your bug in the air, so that as you're looking at the numbers, you'll think, okay, this is a significantly lower number projected.
Can I just note one thing that was interesting? Dr. Lane, superintendent over Virginia's Public Instruction, had discussed with us about a month ago that in Virginia, in enrollment in schools for this year due to pandemic and situation we're in, was down by 38,000 students. So that's, that's pretty big. Out of that number, 12,000 were kindergartners. And from what the study showed was that many of them just were either delaying, you know, putting them into schools, or, you know, working with them at home to start with. But he said be ready for that impact in the next year, the possibility of more kindergartners or increased first graders based on that. And again, that's just across Virginia, not necessarily just Nelson, but.
Right.
There's some interesting numbers.
So I find myself talking about housing a lot in my job, and, and I rub up against people who are in the real estate market. And in Nelson, our real estate sales have gone up like 40% this year.
Are what?
More than all of the surrounding areas. So there may be some people who, due to pandemics, have decided to flee the cities and come to the countries. And I don't know if, you know, that's something that we could take into account. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily recommend it because it's, you know, it's maybe making decisions based on something that we don't know anything about yet. But again, you know, we'll be conservative, and if we have more kids, that would be not the worst thing.
Right, that's, that's interesting.
I just didn't see the demographics of who's moving in.
So one other topic we wanted to talk about was some staffing implications due to the hybrid instruction, and some ideas that we have mauled around as an administrative team. We would be interested in looking at the possibility of hiring long-term substitute teachers, so that we would have them on staff at each school. And possibly, instead of having just one at the high school and one at the middle school, having three at the high school, middle school complex to be able to float as needed in case teachers needed to be out. The cost for those five substitutes came to, with including benefits, $76,900. We're also concerned about childcare for our teachers on the, if they're in a cohort situation where you have kids on two days and they're not assigned the other two days. So we were looking at the possibility of having childcare for staff, to have childcare at each site would be $30,539.87. And then as a creative maneuver, to be able to increase our supply of bus drivers, we'd like to offer our custodians the opportunity to train to be bus drivers and have a combined custodial bus driver position, where they would drive, work as a custodian, and then drive to end the shift. And that would be, including benefits, an additional $6,870.29 per driver if the custodian decided to do that. So we're looking to see how we can meet the needs with the existing staff that we have. But we wanted to put some dollars and cents to it, and we think that these costs could be absorbed with our substitute teacher budgets, since we haven't used very much of that thus far this year. Just something for the board to consider.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Irvin?
You're going to give us all those numbers that you just rattled off?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I appreciate the consideration of trying to come up with workaround solutions and thinking outside the box.
Absolutely.
That's, that's how we're going to win. That's how we're going to get where we need to be.
Okay. Next item is instructional plan, next steps.
And so just to begin, this is just your time to be able to share and discuss, ask questions. My team and I are here to answer any questions that you may have, as we have tried to do and, you know, continue to give you as much information as we can.
Do you want to start with the proposal?
Sure. Yes, it is my proposal still, that we begin in hybrid for second semester. Now, the one thing that, as we have read research for what Impact Week looks like, which is the week after holidays, that it gets tricky because of families and adults and different things, to no fault of the children. So I want to start back to hybrid as soon as possible, but I'm asking that January 19th be a consideration to begin our tier process for hybrid.
Okay, and you're talking about pre-K through three at that point?
Yes, that would be the first tier. Moving next to tier two would be fourth through eighth grade. And finally, wrapping up with tier three, grades nine through 12. It would be my hope that we could get all three tiers in before the beginning of fourth quarter.
Okay, so this is our time to discuss this as a board, as individuals, as a group. And so I'd like to go around the group, and Ms. Claire, let's start with you.
I have really, really worked very hard on coming up with a way that I could look at this and take everybody's opinion into account, looking at the community health indexes and what is recommended by the CDC, or at least the Virginia Department of Health for, you know, what we should do. We're looking at the cases per 100,000 in the last two weeks, and the lower to lowest is, should be under 20 cases. This past week, we have had 25. The percentage of positive tests in the last two weeks, we are looking to be for the lower to the lowest risk, under 5% test positive, and we're at around 15% positive. This is as of, I think, Friday, last Friday.
And you're speaking to Nelson or the state?
I'm talking about Nelson.
Okay.
Yep. So, and this is all information that's going to be on the dashboard that you're putting up. The strategies that we should be implementing, our masks, social distancing, hygiene, you know, of washing your hands, et cetera, cleaning the places, and contact tracing. The lowest criteria is that all five are done correctly and consistently. And I would say that we probably hit the lower of the two, which is all, they're done correctly, but they're not. are going to be the ones that are not necessarily following the protocols, and it doesn't always turn out to be that way. And it also hasn't necessarily proven that it's in the schools that things are happening. But when you're looking at behaviors that could lead to risk, if, you know, you're outside doing things that, you know, where not doing those strategies, and you're bringing your kid in, or you're, you know, whatever, anyway, we need to make sure that everybody's following those strategies as fast as possible. And then the last one is hard for me to, you know, I'm not a health person, so I'm just trying to compare the two and see where we are. You know, the percent change in new cases is definitely going up in the last two weeks. So I personally feel, I've gotten a lot of feedback from you guys that have come to hear today, from teachers, from the students, and I really feel that it is, we're still not ready to go back. I liked the superintendent's suggestion is that we begin in hybrid for at least a week or so, to leave some time after Christmas, see what the numbers are. I myself would like to look at it starting a little bit later than the 19th, maybe two more weeks, because that gives us time to assess the numbers in the meeting and see if they are, you know, if we peaked or not, you know, if we're, we're going back to these health numbers. It also gives us time to double check all of our boxes, make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. Again, I really appreciate the work that you've done in the last few weeks to answer some of our questions. I like the idea that for the kids who decide that they want to stay home, or the parents that decide that they want to stay home, that there is options now for them to have some asynchronous. And I would also like to say that while we're still in remote, I would like us to really, really focus hard on those kids that don't have any synchronous opportunities. Maybe we can, you know, make sure that they are getting their opportunities. I know there are not a lot of them, but they're all important, or as just important as anybody is. So we want to make sure we can focus on them. Have I gone over three minutes?
No, I didn't. I'm limiting on.
Yeah, and so I would like to be able to assess the numbers again in our January meeting, and then go, you know, in February, just another couple weeks. But I'm not against going to hybrid, especially in the tiered way that you're saying, but I feel like we need to hold off just a little bit longer. And I, I mean, I got a lot of emails from teachers, I got, I mean, I think we all did. A lot of feedback via email, people that don't want to come to these meetings, who do really want to stay, teachers, parents who really want to stay remote, they think it's really important. Vaccination coming is a big key thing, and we're not going to get it until later, but, you know, and we're holding, we're holding it well, but I just don't think we're ready yet, without my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Yes. I'm in agreement with what Ms. Claire said. I would like to wait an extra two weeks to see how the numbers look.
So an extra two weeks past the end of break, so past the beginning of the semester, you mean?
Or past when Dr. Eagle talked about.
As Claire stated, I'm more in favor of waiting until that date than the, to give us a chance to look at the numbers and see where we are as a whole in the community.
Okay. All right, Ms. Turner Giles?
Thank you. You know, safety will always be at the forefront of my mind when it comes to our students, teachers, staff, et cetera. I continue to be concerned with the rising COVID numbers. I'm concerned of spreading the virus, not only amongst our students, but our teachers, our staff, and then, of course, potentially carrying it home to respective families and, as well as the community. You know, as we continue to contemplate what it would look like to move forward toward this hybrid model, I'm concerned about safety for all. I continue to look at the health metrics, just to see where we stand amongst other counties. I continue to contemplate the synchronistic opportunities for remote learners. I recognize that there are families that just cannot bring their students to school, not because they don't want to, but because of the health issue of either their current student or the individuals and their family. So I think we need to be very, very deliberate in making sure that we're providing the same opportunities for those that come to school as to those that cannot come to school. I'm concerned about the backup plan for teachers, staff, bus drivers, as this virus starts to spread and we start to bring students back. And certainly, as we start to look at moving into hybrid, what happens if there is a total shutdown and we have to go back to 100% remote? How quickly can we navigate and pivot back into that mode so it does not constitute an uproar, not just for the students, but for the teachers and everyone involved? So I strongly feel that we do need to get our students back to the schools. I recognize that the remote option is not ideal for everyone. I certainly applaud the teachers, our administrators, the students, parents, everyone that's been involved with working through our current virtual environment. And I really want to take the opportunity now to thank those community members, our teachers, the students, that continue to reach out to me and share their comments. It is this feedback that allows me to know that we're not quite there yet. So I appreciate you all continuing to reach out and let me know what you're thinking. So based on the feedback, based on the fact that we are getting ready to enter into a holiday break, based on the rising numbers, I strongly feel that we need to continue with 100% virtual remote. I just feel that this is the safest option right now. I am looking at numbers daily, looking at things weekly, and I look forward to having continued conversations as we come back from the holiday break to see how things look, so that we can start to talk about when that move to hybrid would be most appropriate for all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Powell?
I just want to say, I appreciate the board's willingness to begin to figure out how do we get our students back in school. So Ms. Claire, Caesar, Ms. Turner Giles, thank you for continuing to think about a way we can make this work. As Margaret stated, I think we look at the CDC guidelines, and there may have been a time, and there was a time, we probably could have had these kids back in school safely. Right now, we're in an uptick. We know that of COVID cases. Our numbers are, are rising, and they will probably continue to rise through the end of the year, going into the first of next year. So while I do like the superintendent's proposal of beginning hybrid, I agree that perhaps a little bit more time may be beneficial, because I think what we're going to see when we come back from Christmas is we will see an uptick. And the last thing I want to see happen is that we begin to get these kids back to school, and it doesn't work because it's not the right time. I don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot. I don't want anything to jeopardize, once we start that track to bringing kids back, anything to jeopardize that. So I think what we're going to see is, we're going to see after Christmas, we're going to see that typical surge, where people have probably not done everything they want to do, and we're tired, right? Like, we want to see our friends, we want to see our family. But the reality is, is that that's going to probably cause a surge in cases. Then we'll probably see a secondary surge off of that when people come back home. And so we're going to have a couple to several weeks of increasing cases post-Christmas. I don't want us, again, to shoot ourselves in the foot. So I agree that let's begin to stagger our kids back to school. If the board is amenable to it, and they're saying, yes, I agree with it, then I certainly would agree with saying, let's wait beyond that January 19th, perhaps the end of February 1st. Could be a great day for us to target with the end goal that we bring those first group of kids back. If we see that that's not working, and to respond to Ms. Turner Giles, she brings up some great points about what our concerns are. The staggered approach would allow us to see the things before we wholesale begin to bring a larger and larger group back in, the things that we need to work on. I think the central office has done a nice job of saying, here's what the layers of how we're going to manage it. But I would, I would say to anybody that's involved in the process, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a student, if you see something that you think is not working, have the courage, have the bravery, reach out and say something. Don't let us fail. If there are things in the process that you see could be tripping stones for us, then let's bring those up earlier rather than later. And so that gives us the time in that month of January to say, okay, here's our goal date, and I do think we need to set a goal date. I think the day of us to keep saying month to month to month, we'll think about it next month, we'll think about it next month, that's past. I think we need to set a date, knowing that in January, if we come back to our meeting and we say, this is not good, you know, the numbers are continuing to rise, then we revisit it, because we've always got the option to step back if we need to. And I think we need to keep that in mind, that moving forward, if we feel like that the cases are rising, they're not doing the things, the safety of our students, the safety of our staff, nobody wants to jeopardize that, number one. There is no one on this stage, in this, or in this auditorium, that wants to jeopardize our student or staff safety. So if we see that, those numbers rising and not going the way we need them to, then we take a step back and we reevaluate. But at this point, I think we need to put a day, put a time, and make a commitment so that our families, and especially the kids that are continuing to struggle and not do well. You know, I spent the last three days, and I'm, we're lucky that I have the opportunity to do this with no internet, and having to find internet, navigate somewhere in the county to get Katie to do her classes. That's something people have been living with every single day since this started. So I really appreciate everybody's willingness to come to the table, to talk about it, and come up with a solution. But I think we probably do need to put some sort of a date or some kind of a timestamp, knowing that if we need to pull back, we can, but let's, to move forward. So I thank you for the work that you've done, the increased focus you put on some areas that I think needed some increased focus. And then I'll say to the community, and to our students, and to our staff, you have the documents, if you see something and there's some concerns, then let's reach out and let's nip it before we get to that point.
Okay, thank you. So I'll go last. First of all, I want to thank my fellow board members for all the thoughtful comments, and I am heartened to see movement in the direction of going hybrid. I agree, I think everyone has stated tonight that they want to make sure that the children are safe, and that is of the utmost importance, that we do that. One of the things that happened this week is when we, we were sent the eighth grade essay, persuasive essays, it occurred to me in reading those, they were, they were divided, as you can imagine. There were students that were, were saying, you know, I'm afraid to go to school, I think we'll do better with virtual. And there were others that were talking about what their experience was now, and how they were struggling, and they wanted to go back to in-person learning. And what I took from that after reading all of them was that it seems to me that we are discussing what might happen if we go back, but then the people that are struggling by not coming to school, and their grades are struggling, social struggling, you know, mental struggles, things like that emotionally, they're talking about what's happening right now, instead of what could happen. And so we spend a lot of time here talking about what if, because our primary job is to protect these kids and to protect our staff, too. I want to share a couple of things with you all. This comes from the American Academy of Pediatrics. They recommend, first of all, the Center of Disease Control and Prevention advises individuals maintain six feet of distance, we already know that. But the head of the CTC came out the other day and was talking publicly about how we should do everything we can to get children back in school, and that that's more important. The American Academy of Pediatrics noted, notes that spacing as close as three feet may have similar benefits if students wear cloth face coverings and do not have symptoms of illness. Schools, and they also go on to say, the schools should weigh the benefits of strict adherence to a six-feet spacing rule when students with the potential downside if remote learning is the only alternative. So the American Academy of Pediatrics is already weighing into that. And I, and I want to talk for a second about what some other school systems in the state are doing. One of the things that I've pulled up is a, this is a partial website, and of course, it's a partial website, the Virginia School Operational Status. There are 15 divisions in the state of Virginia that are going in-person. Forty-two are going partially in-person, meaning they're, they're going in-person, some are in-person, some are in a virtual mode. Thirty divisions are all hybrid, like what we're talking about going to second semester. Eleven are partially hybrid, and 34 divisions are fully remote as we are. Now, this week, we're hearing a lot about divisions that are pulling back to virtual because of spikes in cases. The Virginia Department of Health and the CDC is talking about how those spikes are coming from, you know, holiday gatherings around Thanksgiving during this time, and we expect to see another spike like this after the, after the Christmas holiday and the New Year. So I want to highlight one school system in particular that is going all in-person, and they have been going all in-person. First of all, 15 school systems, 10 school systems, sorry, began in-person September the 8th and have remained that way, with a few exceptions where they have gone back into virtual and come back. They are Bath County, Bristol, Buchanan, Grayson, Hanover, Highland, Lexington, Norton, Prince George, and Taswell. In November the 12th, five other school systems decided they were going to go in-person as well. Galax, Lee, Pulaski, Wise, and With, and they are all going either four days or five days a week. I want to highlight Hanover in particular, because I went and looked, and one of the things we've discussed is, and we're doing now on our school system.
Excuse me, hold on, sorry. Caesar, we've got some phone issues. Caesar and them are cut off, we need to...
Ms. Turner Giles, can you hear us?
I sure can.
Okay, Mr. Perkins, are you there?
He's, he's off, he's been cut off.
Okay, we're, if you could wait one moment, so we can get him back on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. She's off. Okay, both of them got...
Ms. Giles, you're on. We need that intermission music right now.
Ms. Giles?
Are you there, Ms. Giles?
I am, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put you on conference, so if you have a minute, I'll be back.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Perkins, I'm going to put you back on conference.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Giles, are you there?
I sure am, thank you.
Ms. Perkins, you're still there?
Yeah.
Okay. As I was saying, the schools that have been going in-person have been going either four or five days a week. There hasn't really been any evidence to show that those school systems have had increases in cases, or their localities have, due to the school system going to in-person learning. I'd like to highlight Hanover County down next to Richmond. They have 16,500 students in their school system, and they're spread out amongst 26 school buildings. To date, they have
Ms. Giles, you're on. We need that intermission music right now.
(phone rings) Ms. Giles?
Are you there, Ms. Giles?
I am, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put you on conference, so if you have a minute, I'll be back. Hi, Ms. Perkins, I'm going to put you back on conference.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Giles, are you there?
I sure am, thank you.
Mr. Perkins, you're still there?
Yeah. Okay. As I was saying, the schools that have been going in-person have been going either four or five days a week. There hasn't really been any evidence to show that those school systems have had increases in cases or their localities have, due to the school system going to in-person learning. I'd like to highlight Hanover County down next to Richmond. They have 16,500 students in their school system, and they're spread out amongst 26 school buildings. To date, they have had 83 cases since September, is what they've had. And they, like everyone else, like we do, they have protocols in place, set in place. And my point to all of this is that, that we can do this, okay? And I'm very heartened to see that our, that our board members are all talking about this now, but, and I, and I certainly think that when we have times when we have big spikes like we're having right now, it's appropriate to pull back to a virtual setting. But I think that this is something that is very doable. And also want to share with you some statistics from Nelson County. As of last, this past week, there's been 210 cumulative cases. There have been 11 hospitalizations, and there have been three deaths in this county. The most recent population data that we have for the county is, last year it was 14,900 residents in this county, and that represents a grand total of 1.4% of the population getting this virus since March. And then the, the other numbers are very small, they're way less than 1%, or 1/10 of 1%. So again, my point is, if we can do this, we can do it responsibly. I am, would be very much in favor, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Powell, about coming back maybe on February the 1st, I certainly could support that. I do have a question, we're due to meet again on the 14th, so how much time, Dr. Eagle, will your staff need if we meet on the 14th and make a decision? If we make a decision for February 1st, is that enough time?
Sure. So if you have a target date, as Ms. Powell stated, then we can go ahead and start getting communication out if the tier one, PK through three, we can find out what their declaration or intent is. As all of you have said, and community members have said, they will have a choice to stay, remain virtual, or come into hybrid, we can start that, so that we have our transportation, we have our meals, we have our intent ready. That way, when you come back in January, if that shifts, that's easy to wait on, we at least have our information then.
Okay. And, and how quickly, say we have a spike, how quickly do you feel like we could go into a virtual mode and then come back out?
Well, because we've been remote, it's a little easier than if we weren't for a long period of time. So I'm not sure that I could give you a time period, that it would be a lot easier, you know, to, to go back into remote. Not sure it would be healthy to keep flipping and flopping, but knowing the holidays and what, you know, they're doing now, that's understandable.
So did you finish your statement?
I did, and the only thing I'd like to say in closing on that is that I just think that everything that we do in life is a risk versus the benefit. And we drive every day, and there's an inherent risk to driving, but we do it because the benefit of driving far outweighs the risk of driving. And I feel the same way about students being in school. I think the benefit of them being in school far outweighs any risk imposed, or expected, or feared of them being in-person learning. We, I firmly believe that, that we could do irreparable harm to a generation of children by not allowing them to attend, attend school in-person, and I think we need to pay very close attention to that. I think there's a reason why you don't put on the news and you hear about how many kids are dying of COVID, because they're not. And there's a reason why you don't turn on the news and hear about kids passing COVID on to grownups, and them being hospitalized or passing away, because that's not really happening. So what we have is a virus that's running through the community, and it will continue to do so till we have a vaccine. But I definitely would like to see us get back into hybrid sometime, you know, mid-January to February, so I could support all of that.
So when we talked about the format of this, we talked about everybody making a statement, and like where we stand, and then allowing everybody to take turns...
Sure.
...taking questions, or asking questions of each other, or of the administration, until all those questions were answered.
Okay.
Just trying to...
No, that's fine.
I know you're in charge, so...
That's fine. So, so Ms. Claire, you, if you'd like to start?
You know what, I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Perkins, do you have any questions?
No.
Ms. Turner Giles?
Just, just a comment and one question. So first of all, I appreciate all the board members' comments. George, you made a comment in regards to the VDOE statistics. I was in a governor's meeting this week, and those VDO statistics that you scattered off, they were only last updated on November 12th. So there have been lots of schools that have reverted back to 100% remote. They are working on getting that site updated, so just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Second of all, this question is for Dr. Eagle. Is it easier to switch from virtual to hybrid, hybrid to virtual in the middle of the semester or at the end of a semester? I know there was some conversation about that early on, but I can't remember based on what teachers, how teachers felt, is it easier to make that switch? So if you could comment on that, it would be great.
Okay, yeah, sure. Ms. Turner Giles, if you could ask that question again, a little slower, you're breaking up.
Yes, so the question is, is it easier to switch from hybrid to 100% virtual, or virtual to hybrid in the middle of a semester or at the end of a semester?
Okay, yes. So the question is, is it easier between hybrid to virtual or virtual to hybrid? And what, when the declaration or the intent is made from the students or families, if they select hybrid because of the social distancing and logistics for transportation, et cetera, we would need for them, we would need to know, obviously, that they are going to hybrid. It is, a hybrid person can switch back to virtual quite easily, because it does not take a class seat or a seat on the bus. We would not allow, in the middle of a quarter, quarter, not semester, but a middle of a quarter, switching from virtual to hybrid, because that's when it gets into the, the seating and making sure the numbers are correct. And so those declarations for going from virtual to hybrid would need to begin at the very beginning, when we start the tiers, and then at the quarter change. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And my final question is, when does, this next semester starts in January, but when does it end?
The first quarter, the first day of the third quarter begins on January 6th. The end of third quarter is March 12th. The beginning of fourth quarter is March 15th, and the end of fourth quarter is May 28th.
Thank you so much.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Ms. Powell?
A couple of questions. The first one, when, oh, sorry. When you were saying, we discussed how quickly, if we, let's say, went into a hybrid situation and cases spiked and we needed to pull back to, to 100% virtual, and you weren't really sure, and I don't expect you to know the exact time, but could, could we, would it be two days to convert back, three days to convert back instantaneously?
Just given what other divisions have had to do, it's probably about two days.
Two days?
Yeah. It's, it's not, it's not too much of time. Of course, again, as I just spoke with, in the hybrid situation, when we have students sitting in our classes, for them to be, you know, to, to be removed, the planning for families is probably the biggest thing, it's two-day cohorts, and so them having that knowledge that we're going reverting back is probably the, the, the biggest time, you know, to give communication of that. And then you'd only have those amount of students going back to virtual, right? And then depending on the time period, the one or two weeks, then we would want to know that those same hybrid are coming back to sit in our seats, if that makes sense. And we would assume those virtual, because it's not at a quarter break, would stay virtual. So it'd be mostly the communication and planning time.
One of the other concerns, I think, that some of us have had all along, well, all of us have had all along, is the impact of virtual learning on our students who can't engage every day, don't have advocates there, don't have the capability for somebody to get them to internet. One of the suggestions from somebody I respect a ton, somebody suggested was that instead of waiting for the kids in that semester, you know, we identify the remediation kind of as they go along, if we've identified students that we know first semester had issues, instead of waiting, can we, from the very beginning, to try to keep them up to speed, start something right off the bat, so that when they come in, if we are able to transition in February 1st, they miss less steps than they would have if we hadn't touched them from the beginning of that semester?
Sure, that's a great idea. We talked about this the other day in administrative meeting. We would want to give probably that first week back, just to get things settled, but looking at towards the middle of January, you know, those that are planning to come back, if you, some small group, like you said, tutoring or remediation, which is what we've been working on, that is a great idea.
And again, from a safety standpoint, you know, we want to, you know, I don't think we want anybody right away, those first couple of weeks after...
Sure, that's, that's...
Because it defeats the purpose of what we're doing.
Yep.
Okay, that's good to know.
Since that brought up a question for me, which is, are we doing 100% virtual without remediation going for the first couple of weeks until after...
Correct. That's what, yes, so that's what we talked about administration, coming back with that impact week, we're not going to have the small groups for the remediation like we have had.
We could do remediation between like 19th and the 1st.
Sure. Yep, towards the, yep.
Okay, so a question I have, so you're saying that what we do is send a survey out, what you all would do is send a survey out to parents, and they would declare for the third quarter, and towards the end of the third quarter, we would give them the opportunity to switch, or re-declare, or affirm, whatever.
Correct.
Okay. So that served as a really good prompt for something I forgot to say. One of the things I noted with Hanover was, they're doing all in-person, but they did it by semester. They actually said, they, in September, by September, some date in September, they gave the parents an opportunity to pick, and once they picked, they were locked in for that semester. And their November 10th meeting, they did the exact same thing for second semester, so. So, so there are school systems that are doing that, so I think it's a pretty good idea.
Or you could do another round of...
Yes. So, do you have...
Not, not with my question. I'm good, I'm good now.
Yes, ma'am. No questions, okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Powell, do you have any other questions?
I don't think so.
I don't think I do either.
I know, isn't that amazing?
Okay, so if no one else has questions, we will move along to our items for action. So our first item for action is staff bonuses. Sorry, it's staff bonuses, I need to stay closer to the mic.
And we had, if this is a, if this is something somebody wants to do, we had written something, because you have to talk about the differences between, but you don't see that. Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
Exactly. Is that, is that in alignment, I guess, that's in alignment with what the county proposed?
So, yeah, so the, the...
Hold one second.
That's okay. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Redo our connection, that'll be fine. Yeah. None, none at all.
Mr. Perkins, you're still on? Okay, will you stay?
Yes, and I'm still on as well.
Right. But you're very staticky, so I would like you, Ms. Turner Giles, to please disconnect, and then I'll, I'll call you once again, we'll get another link.
Okay, thank you for doing so.
Yep. Hold on, Mr. Perkins, you'll hear wolf music, and then you'll be right back.
Okay.
Is there, Ms. Turner Giles?
Yes, I'm right here.
Yes, that's much clearer.
Much better.
Thank you.
Okay, so our first item of action is a mid-year bonus for staff, and is this, is this in line with what the county's proposing, Dr. Eagle?
Not the amounts, no, but they are giving a staff bonus. I believe that the, the Sheriff's Department did 500, and the county is doing 500, but it is very much in line with what other school divisions are doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so... One moment, please.
Okay, thank you. I am.
Okay, so our item for action is mid-year bonus action item, and unless there's discussion about this item, then we need to entertain a motion for this item.
I move that we approve staff bonuses as submitted by the superintendent.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
And part of that motion needed to be that categorical.
Differentiation.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so let's read...
I move that we approve staff bonuses with the differentiation for full-time as well as part-time. Do you need the numbers?
Staff also needs the permission to be able to move funds within the budget to cover the bonuses, because we're taking from multiple line items to be able to fund those.
Oh, no.
Not at all.
Okay.
Take three.
Y'all got me straight now. I make a motion to approve the superintendent's proposed recommendation for a staff bonus in the amount of $1,000 for all active full-time staff, and 500 for all active part-time staff. I also move to grant authority to staff to move funds between major categories and line items within the current budget as needed.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Eagle, I saw what you were...
Motion carries. Okay, second item is the second semester instructional calendar. I'll need a move, a, a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
I move that we approve the second semester instructional calendar as proposed.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Perkins, are you still there?
Yes, that's an aye.
Okay. Thank you. Item C on items for action is the second reading of policy updates.
I move that we approve the second reading of the policy updates.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. The final item tonight on our items for action is D, instructional plan. So I will need a motion on the instructional plan for the second semester.
So I move that we remain virtual when beginning the second semester on January 6th. Our plan being to continue to evaluate monthly health metrics in the hopes of moving to a hybrid, hybrid format as soon as possible. And then we'll continue small group remediation and tutoring as we have been, and continue athletics as we have been, and as recommended by the VHSL, but that would start on January 19th, or, you know, whatever the two-week timeframe is, right?
No, the, the sports will, the, the sports are starting, well, a couple of games have been postponed, but they are doing that currently, they're, that's ongoing.
But the remediation will be two weeks... But the remediation will be two weeks. I don't know if we need to put that kind of detail in the motion.
Probably not.
Right. But so we'll continue remediation and athletics as normal. I thought that should be in the...
All right, we need to, all right, if you don't mind, would you restate that?
Yeah, sure.
If you would restate that so it's clear, please.
I got it written down. What? I, I got it. I got it written down. All right, so I move that we remain virtual in the second semester starting January 6th. I'm going to switch it around a little bit. We will continue small group remediation and tutoring as we have been, and continue athletics as we have been, and as recommended by the VHSL. And our plan is to continue to evaluate monthly, the health metrics monthly, in the hopes that we can move to a hybrid format as soon as possible, possibly the beginning of February.
Okay, is everyone clear on the motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one question.
Can we, can we get a second, and then we can debate it? In that way, we're, we're, unless you guys don't want a second?
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, Ms. Turner Giles, what'd you say?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Right, and then we can debate it, and we can amend it if necessary, okay?
Okay, so when will the remediation begin?
Well, I understood the superintendent to say she wanted to leave a couple of weeks after, the weeks of impact after, so we don't necessarily have to put a date on that, but we will get into that, you know...
Right, everything continues as is. We are using that Impact Week after to be smart about things. Athletics will continue as we have.
I'd like to put a hard date in that. I'd like, the February 1st, is that the goal for beginning virtual learning with the idea that, I mean, I think the motion sounds fine, just say our goal to start February 1st. If the metrics say we shouldn't, then we follow those metrics, but I think, I would like a hard date within that so that we have a goal and we have a prep plan, knowing that we can pull back easier than we can push forward.
Especially if we know we can pull back on two days.
Right, right.
Okay, so how about if I amend it to read, the last part of it to read, we will plan to move to hybrid format on February 1st if health metrics are acceptable and when we review them, acceptable when we review them at our January meeting, and if all of the criteria are met. How's that sound? That sound okay?
Okay, the motion's been amended. Can I get a second?
Well, we already amended it.
Yeah, but you need a second, the amended, the amended motion.
I don't think we have to read second, though, if we just amend it. But I don't know.
Just in case, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Season Gina?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Statement here somewhere. Okay, we do need to go into closed session. Ms. Turner Giles and Mr. Perkins, we need to figure out the logistics on that. We will, we're going to call you back, I guess, after we, after I read the station, statement. So pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. A1, the discussion of personnel matters to include new hires, retirements, or resignations is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code.
I move we go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in closed session.
Aye.